A message last night that she had been exposed to somebody who had COVID. And so she is isolating for a few, four days. So she won't be here. Yeah, I think it was already here. My kids were sick over the Fourth of July when they were here. They had headaches and stuff, so. Okay, Janet?
Here.
I'm here. Jane?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
Patty Murdock?
Here.
John Chams? And Patty Tomazak is absent. Public comment on agenda items? Okay. Does somebody want to approve the agenda? Send it? Second?
Second.
Okay. All approved? Okay, so I sent a copy of the minutes to everybody. And I also printed out a copy, so you should have that in your packet. So if you've had a chance to look at it, are there any changes? Or comments on the minutes from the July 27th meeting?
Make a promotion wait, except the minutes.
Okay, second?
Either one, it doesn't matter.
I didn't say she didn't. Alright, everybody. I? Approved? Alright. The primary purpose of this special meeting was to go over and approve the annual report. And I've given all of you a copy of that, so we can take a look at that. And if there's typos, things that need to be, you know, added, or whatever comments, we're gonna go through that. And also, since we were here, we had an opportunity to get the large maps that NEMCOG sent last week. They were not here in time, or at least we didn't know that they were here in time for the July 27th meeting. So we can take a look at those. Those are the existing maps, pre-existing maps. So that's, we need to make sure everything's correct on those before you go changing to the future maps. Okay? So we can go and take a look at the, it's a fairly short, ten pages. But basically, it's to go over what, a short summary of what we did. And traditionally, the Planning Commission had always submitted monthly meetings to the board. And they were given, in years past, orally and then written. So in January, the current board decided that they wanted an annual report. The Planning Enabling Act always requires an annual report. Doesn't specify a date or format, it has some ideas. And we've looked at different townships and counties and what they've done. Some of the annual reports are one page. You know, here's how the meeting says what we did, that's it. Some of them are very elaborate, akin to a master plan, where they've hired, you know, companies to help them produce this annual report. And it's very, you know, very pretty, but it's expensive, so.
One of them that I looked at, MEDC did, and I can't remember which township that was for, but it was one that MEDC put together.
But there's some basic things that we need to do. So we've got an introduction to the Planning Enabling Act and what we've done. I've listed some of the actions and accomplishments that we've done throughout the year. And then we've got the commission membership and the current expiration dates. And I need to, that's on page five. When Patty Tomazak was appointed to the Planning Commission by the board, she was appointed to fill the remainder of Kelly Ashford's.
That's correct.
Yep, right? And then an additional three years' term, and that was approved. However, if you look at the minutes from the meeting, it doesn't have that in there.
Skip that.
It skipped that.
Nobody caught that then?
You know, she needs to be kind of officially reinstated for those three years.
I'll take care of that.
Okay, so maybe at the September meeting, you guys can put that on the agenda.
Yep, I'll take care of that.
So we just wanted to point that out, just to make sure everything's.
Do I just like go page by page?
Yes, we go page by page, okay? Cover? Any comments? And I did, because an annual report implies that it's 12 months annually. But since this is, we're directed to do the annual report starting in January, we picked up from, the activity from January through the end of August, which is when we said we'd do the report from last year. So, and it kind of makes sense to do it through, at the end of August. There's nothing in here that impacts the budgets, it's just a summary of what's done. So by doing it at the end of August, September is when all of the officers and the officials and residents start. We're appointed starting in September, and the new positions, the secretaries, starting in September. So it makes sense to do the annual report starting September 1st through August 31st. So, I mean, that's what I'm suggesting at this point. And so we haven't, we didn't go back the previous six months. Okay? Any, any other questions on why it's January through August and not something else? The page two is simply the Planning Commission's purpose. And this came from the Planning Commission handbook. And, you know, it explains that elected officials are representatives for the people in the community and are accountable to the voters. But as a planning commissioner, on the other hand, is a representative of the people. And when, when the board makes appointments to the Planning Commission, they try to appoint people from all areas, geographically from the township, and to pick people that are representative of the different areas of like, different professions, different, you know, schoolteachers, hospital professionals, business owners, residents. So you have a cross-section of, of the voters. And that's because the Planning Commission has interests throughout the community. They're various, they're, you know, found in, in a lot of different areas. So in theory, this allows the Planning Commissioner to act without political considerations that influence elected officials, because we're outside of that. We're not elected, appointed, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
It says, on the second bullet point, it says.
Which page are you on?
On number three.
Oh, I thought you were still on page two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Alright, I was jumping ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Alright, so, but basically, in our Planning Commission in particular, the greatest responsibility is to provide guidance, the land use and development in the community through our master plan. Where, through the Planning Enabling Act, we create the master plan, put it together, and then it's approved by the board after public hearings, after it's sent out to all the other surrounding townships and counties.
Yeah, the adjacent townships, they get to weigh in, the county actually gets to say yes or no.
And in our Planning Commission, we are an advisory body. We don't have the authority to make decisions or recommendations on anything. Anytime that the planning and zoning in Sheboygan County, they control our zoning. And they will send notifications of actions that affect Tuskeria Township. And they, they value the opinion of the Planning Commission. So that's why we take a look at it and we provide guidance, suggestions, advice. And then we provide that to them. They make a decision.
Yeah, when you say the other townships around, is it like the bordering townships?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so how many of those are there? I should maybe know that, but I don't.
Well, I think we said Mentor, Mullet, Coler, Burt. Mullet, did I say Mullet? The ones around there, and then Sheboygan County. And then, NEMCOG walks you through the whole process in, in the master plan of publishing the notices and taking care of all the public meetings and who it has to go out to for approval, that sort of thing. And then it comes back again to the Planning Commission, we take another, a look at it. And then it's sent to the board, and the board adopts it. Okay? So, you know, the Planning Commission, we, we have some influence, I'd like to say. But we don't make, we can't make any final decisions on, on anything. Except we do do the master plan. Okay? We go on to the next page. You have a question on that? Okay, so page three, Janet, you have a question on page three?
Yeah, on the second bullet point, it says reviewing development requests as an advisory body to Sheboygan County Planning and Zoning.
Yes.
We are an advisory committee to the Township Board, not to county.
No, we're advisory to the county.
According to the resolution that we're working under right now, it says, "All plans, regulations, and zoning activities of the Township Planning Commission shall be subject to the approval of the Township Board of Tuskeria Township, which approval shall be required before the same becomes effective." We are appointed by the Township Board to advise the Township Board.
We're advisory to the county, that we, when you say advise, advisory to the board, there's nothing we can do. I mean, we can advise you that you should look at some sort of an ordinance, Food Truck, for example. We advise you that, based on feedback from the public, we advise you, you should look at, the Township Board, you should look at that. You have the right to not do it. But from a zoning standpoint, or anything that the county has going on for Tuskeria Township, we're advisory to them. Other, like Burt Township is not advisory to them.
Because they do their own zoning, I understand.
We don't do zoning, they do it for us. But they, when we say advisory, it's because they listen to us, there's a relationship there. They don't have to, they don't listen to any other township. The other townships in this county do not have a planning commission.
Because it's not required.
It's not required. So they made a decision way back then to have a, a planning commission.
Right.
We do our planning, we advise the county what we're up to, they can actually say no.
I know, they can. How does, how does that filter back to the Township Board? How, how does your advice filter back to the Township Board, so we know what you're advising? Because right now, we don't.
Well. Well, that's the purpose of having an ex officio member on the Planning Commission.
But if you're doing it by email, I don't know what the advice is. Because you're doing the advice by email.
So we're individually advising. When we, when she sends, like I said, what happens is they compile, we send her our response. So when something's going on in the township, if I say I don't like it, and here's why I don't like it, we send it to her. She sends it to, she compiles everybody's and sends it to the county. So they get one email, not seven. It's easier for them to look at, okay, here's what Tuskeria Township is looking at. So if you go back to, for example, the in-between, there was a letter that was compiled and it had everybody's concerns. So those of us that had concerns about parking, we said we have concerns about parking. It said there are concerns about parking. Those of us that had concerns about sewer, said there are concerns about sewer. So all they did was compile all of our responses, put it in one document, send it to the county.
It didn't come to the Township Board, though.
Mike, that was Mike's job. Mike wrote the letter. I mean, Mike and Mike wrote the letter.
And that's part of the problem, because communication is.
So that's your responsibility. If we come back and say, this is all the stuff, because it doesn't matter what the board says. I don't care what everybody back there thinks. I only care that I looked at this, formed my own opinion, and sent it to the county. Just like if I were a regular, not even on the board, I could still do that.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is that we should speak as one voice of the township. And if, if there was a conflicting thing about the parking on River Street, you guys sent one thing, the Township Board voted something else, there was no communication there. We didn't know why people were saying what they were saying. We, there was a communication blackout, more or less. What I'm saying is, if, if we go back to our core function as a, as a planning commission and advise the Township Board, then the Township Board can decide if they want to do something else besides what you've advised, or what, but right now, it's like you're bypassing the Township Board.
Alright, the issue here is, the Planning Commission comes under the Planning Enabling Act.
I understand that.
And that reports, it does not say, "We follow the laws of the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act." It does not say that we follow, that it all goes up to the board. It's an autonomous body. Once you've established a planning commission and appointed members, it is an autonomous body. We act as a planning commission. We're required to do the master plan, we do the CIP, and the master plan gets submitted to the board for approval. The CIP gets submitted to the, to the board for approval. The other things, it, it's not, we're not, we're not a department, it's a separate.
You're an advisory committee to the Township Board, because it says so in the resolution you were created under.
But you're, we're advisory in asking the Township Board to address issues that are in the township, concerns that residents have, just like short-term rentals. You know, if, if the people said we should have an ordinance, we tell you, hey, we need to look at an ordinance. You guys have the, you have the authority to say, no, we're not looking at an ordinance. We don't have the authority to go to the township, or to the county and say, look at an ordinance. We don't have that authority. But we do have the authority to say, if something comes through for an ordinance, to say, we agree with this, or we disagree with it, and here's why we disagree with it. So things that the county is doing, we're advisory to the county. We tell them, we don't like what, we don't like this because it affects, there's an adverse effect to the, to the township, that you're not seeing, because you don't live down here. We're the eyes for the county. Not everybody has that luxury. Otherwise, if we don't advise them, they're just gonna do what they want to do. They don't have to listen to the board down here, they don't listen to the board down here, because you guys are political. You're, you're doing what your constituents are saying. They do not listen to the board, they listen to the people. That's what, this is exactly what it says there, Plan Commission Purpose is. This is if you're regional, if you're county, or if you're local. If we get rid of our local planning commission and we don't say anything to them, they're not gonna listen to anybody. They're just gonna do what they're gonna do. This is the only thing that gives us local control.
You said your advice only, it's not really control.
Somewhat, if they listen to you, if you have a good relationship with them, it took, if you talk to John Wallace or any of those folks up there, it took a long time for the relationship to be built between our planning commission and the county planning commission. They didn't used to listen to us at all.
Okay, I, I'm new, so I'm gonna ask lots of stupid questions, I guess. But like, master plan and the CIP, we take, we send to the board, is that because there's action that has to be taken by them?
They have to approve it.
Okay, so they have to, they have to approve that, so. I'm trying to make a distinction between when do they have to approve it and when do they not? Because if those are important things to be approved, and they have to approve it, how do we draw the line differently on other things?
The law.
Okay, so help me understand, because I just want to make sure I understand it.
The Planning Enabling Act has, lays out certain things that a planning commission can do.
Okay.
Many planning commissions do planning and zoning, we do not. We just do, we're just planning. So you're required to do a master plan that needs to be, and it calls out how it gets approved. It's called out Michigan Compiled Law.
Yeah.
You need to do a CIP. You need to do an annual report of what you're doing. You need to hold at least four meetings a year. Other than that, that's it. I mean, if the county didn't choose to send us, oh, we're hearing this.
Right.
We wouldn't, I mean, they, they don't have to send us that, but they do. And so, out of courtesy, they let us know what they're acting on in Tuskeria Township. And we can weigh in and say, hmm, we think, you know, it's good or it's not, or we have no comment, or we have, whatever. They go ahead and either tape it into account, or they, you know, they do or they don't, whatever.
Yeah, because they're gonna take them.
If you look through their minutes, if you look through the county's minutes, I mean, where we have said we have no issues, they don't even document that they got anything from us.
Okay.
But where we have had issues, they will document, they received a letter from Tuskeria Township advising that there are issues with parking, there are issues with sewer, there are concerns with these things. So they do discuss them, and if we send issues to them. We don't vote on what we send.
So it's just like if I was a regular.
Yeah, so, and they will, if they, yeah, and they, generally, they don't.
Meeting coming up, anybody could.
Right, yeah, well, and as, and as a planning commission, we have access maybe to more information than, you know, an individual resident.
So I can pick up the phone and call Mike Turrus and say, hey, this says, you know, this says XYZ, but, you know, I really don't understand that, and he'll explain to us, where they may not take the time to necessarily do that. They want you to show up at the meeting, but they know that we're looking at stuff down here for them.
So, so basically, everything that's called out in the Planning Enabling Act, that I just called out, the minutes, you can have five, or you can have seven, or nine, different. Those are, those are controlled, and the supervisor appoints members of the commission for the terms. And, and again, the master plan and the CIP and all that gets approved, sent to the board and approved. We, we set our, the times of our, our meetings, we elect who's going to be the chair for the next year, vice chair, secretary. We do our bylaws and approve the bylaws, and, and we do minutes, and they get submitted and posted. And that's basically all we do. The other, the other stuff, the advisor is supplemental. So, I mean, it's not, it's not something that's officially submitted and approved by anybody.
I mean, we could probably vote on something and say it, but it doesn't mean anything, because we don't have the authority.
So then, if I were to think that through, then this commission could have one set of recommendations, and the board could have their own.
But it's totally separate.
And they may not agree, they could agree, or they may not agree.
But this commission wouldn't have a position. No, this, we, we can't have a position as a commission. We have a position as individuals on the commission.
Okay.
Right. It's not like the board and the planning commission come together with one voice. That's not how the planning commission works.
That makes us political, we don't want to be.
Yeah, I got it, okay. That helps me understand a little bit, thank you. Sorry about that.
On that same page, bullet number two, remove "uh".
Okay. So are we on page three still?
Yeah.
Any, any other comments? You wanted me to add planning and zoning department at the end of that?
Remove the word "uh".
Okay. And, and again, you know, to Janet, to your point, one of the other things that we can do is, if the board asks or directs us to do something, we can do that at, at the request of the governing legislative board, which is the Tuskeria Township Board. Page four is just some of the things that we've done. We started the master plan, we've reviewed chapters two, three, four, five, and six. Had a waiting to do seven and eight. We did the capital improvement plan. We amended and approved the planning commission bylaws. We sent a letter of support. Again, we did that, Mike Cherviny is the chair, submitted a letter on behalf of the Planning Commission to Tuskeria Township, again, independently, but it's not like the planning, or the board supported this project. But the Planning Commission, as an autonomous body, submitted a letter of support to the sewer, subject to sewer expansion project. We reviewed eight various plans and variance requests in Tuskeria Township in an advisory capacity to the Sheboygan County Planning and Zoning Department, with that. We held three regular and six special planning commission meetings. We had a lot of special meetings, because we were reviewing the chapters of the master plan as they came in. The other thing that we did, I, that was at the top, so I missed that, was we prepared and recommended the adoption of ordinance 40 to the township. The Tuskeria Township Planning Commission, as Janet had there in the newspaper thing, was established under Act 168 of 1959 by resolution, confirmed by the Township Board on May 5th, 1992. The Planning and Enabling Act 33 of 2008, that's the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act.
It was 71, February 25th, 1971.
1971?
Yeah.
Remember I sent you that article, that Kathy Swanson sent?
I thought I changed it.
I thought you did too, but I'm gonna fix that.
Fix that date. Anyway, but the Planning and Enabling Act 33 of 2008, Michigan Compiled Law, established that to replace all prior planning and zoning acts. There were a number of different acts throughout the, throughout the years. So they wanted to repeal all of the old ones, combine them on, into one, one new planning and enabling act. And it required all local governments to repeal and replace all resolutions and ordinances establishing planning slash and/or zoning commissions under prior acts and laws, and adopt a new ordinance to transfer the rights and duties of the established planning commission to itself, under this new act. That happened in 2008, and for whatever reason, the Planning Commission did not, you know, repeal the old one and do that. So we looked at that and took an MTI-approved template, made some revisions to make sure there was no language for zoning in that, and sent it to the township attorney, who was Rob Booth at the time, and recommended to the board that they, you know, pass that ordinance. The board has, at, at this point, it's been sent to the new township attorney, and I believe it's still under legal review by the township attorney. So that has not been done yet. So, that's, okay. Okay, so page five.
One more thing on page four, page be the English.
Hey, it's good somebody has.
Before the, the bold last.
Okay.
In the space between 33 and up.
Yep.
And then I just want to make a comment on the, on the septic sewer letter. That was something that Bob had asked us to do, because you guys needed it for whatever application you guys were doing.
For grant applications, for grants.
Okay, so page five is simply a, a little map that shows Tuskeria Township, existing land use. And then it lists their current membership, the date they were appointed, and the expiration date of the terms. And as I mentioned earlier, we need to, we're gonna take care of that.
I'll take care of that.
To make sure that Patty.
I made a note of that already.
Is reinstated.
One more correction on page five.
Okay?
Where it says I'm up 9/26, I'm actually up to the end of this month.
8/31.
Oh, I thought we changed that, it should have been 9/6.
No, Rod takes over, on 9/1.
Well, you guys voted that, but it's supposed to be three years. And they were appointed on 9/6.
Well, they're going to be up on the first of the month of whatever month they were appointed on, is what the new rule is.
What is that rule?
The new rule would be, like, okay, if you were appointed in September, and, but you're going to be out in September, it would be out September 1st, so the new person could take effect on that, the first of that month. That's what the new rule is.
That's not a rule, that's something made up, the law says three years.
Well, that's what we're going by, until we, we find out otherwise.
Okay, well, that needs to be addressed by the attorney, because it says three years.
I don't think it will, but we're gonna just go by what we got. Rod, you take effect, 9/1.
Okay, any other comments on page five? Okay, page six, the Planning and Enabling Act, an annual report, requires you to keep track of attendance at the meetings and who, how many meetings people attended. So that's simply what this chart reflects. It also shows members who have come and gone. It also shows members who have come and gone over the, over that period of time. So we had Mike Cherviny who resigned in July as chair. I took over as chair since I was vice chair in, when he resigned. And then Don was elected to be vice chair starting September for September. Patty Murdock is going to be secretary starting September. Did that last month. Mike Ridley resigned on May eighth. Meetings, oh, May eighth, May, May twenty, twenty-three. Meetings attended, five out of eight. So we had eight meetings. We need to change this chart because if this goes through the end of August, we need to add today's meeting. So we'll have.
So it'll be nine meetings.
It'll be nine meetings, right. So we'll just change that today.
And that, will that change the very front two, those somewhere else that you said the number of meetings, right?
I think I added that to that already.
Did you? Okay.
Yeah.
Six and three, yep.
So we've got nine meetings, so we'll fix that chart. Page seven, is there any questions on page six? Seven, is the site plans and variances that we reviewed. And we don't have a date for the one we looked at for Transfiguration Church. I know Mike Cherviny didn't comment on that because he is a member of the church or commented or something, but anyway, but those are the ones that we've taken a look at and what we sent to the, the county. And we had no issues, or if, if a letter was written, what, what the issues were. So basically, there were only two, two letters written, and we had, on the in-between project, we had parking and sewer concerns, and on the other River Street project, we had parking, sewer, and then concerns with the docks in the river. And that was what was passed on to the county. Again, they could take our comments for.
Are those letters in our minutes? Because I haven't ever seen them.
They are.
Because there's so much stuff in here.
I, I, I think they might be in one of them, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. They are in the, included in the county's minutes because they sent it up to the county.
Yeah.
That was something like on the, on the River Street condo project, I know all the letter went from Mike Ridley and, and Mike Cherviny together.
Both, both of the letters.
They both signed, yeah, right. Okay. Page eight is simply a recap of the meetings that we held, and whether they were a regular or special meeting, and the agenda items on that particular. So if you weren't looking for a particular issue, you can go back and kind of look for it. All of the minutes are on the township's website. Any questions? Page nine is the capital improvement plan, which was done actually for the first time. So there's a little narrative, explains the purpose of the capital improvement plan this year. Again, this is something that we compiled. We got input from the various other departments, from Parks, Library, did Library send us one? I don't know that they did. Parks, DDA, the Police Department, the Board of Trustees, and then we compiled that and came up with the chart that you see there, that was the CIP plan. That was sent to the board. They had a public hearing where they presented it, and they approved it, and it became part of the, the budget. And they approved that, I think it's part of the appropriations, same as June twenty-ninth. The meeting before that, I don't know. So then, the last, last page is kind of, you know, the planning commission's been pretty busy this year. They're, you know, nine meetings. Like I said, we're only supposed to have four meetings, but in a, in a year when you're doing a master plan, obviously you're going to have many more meetings. So we had quite a few meetings, which we had to look at. So, looking at what we've done and what we still need to finish up for the rest of this year and next year, we need to finish the ten-year master plan. We would like to see the planning commission come into compliance with the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act of thirty-three of two thousand and eight. And the other thing is, the, the short-term rentals, if you look at the minutes of the meeting, public comments, every meeting, and not just our meetings, but DDA's meetings, Parks meetings, the residents are asking for some kind of resolution. And I'm not advocating regulating, registering, or anything, but it, it's obviously a concern in the community, and something needs to, there needs to be some kind of a plan.
Something's already being done, and there's a private citizen committee that's looking into doing that. And I, personally, I think that's the way it should go because the more government gets involved in things, sometimes they mess things up, and if that community of short-term rental operators and owners can regulate themselves, that's all the better. So I think something's already being done. That's more of a zoning issue than it is a land use issue. So I, I do believe that is kind of out of the planning commission's venue, their lane of, of activity. So I think they should just, we need to, as far as our attorney is concerned, he says we don't have any regulatory powers to that, so we need to just back off and let them figure out what they're going to do.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting here is it's something that's affecting the entire township in a way. And it, as a planning commission, looking forward, there should be some kind of a plan. And if there's a private group out there doing a plan.
That's great.
If somebody, it's just something that, you know, is, is on the burner, and, and I, so I, I just put it there as something to look, look at, or may, are going to have to deal with in the coming year. Also then, we'll update the CIP for next year. And another major goal is to ensure that the new growth and development in the township is in compliance with the master plan, as approved by the board. Any questions? I'll make some, I'll make some changes. Any, anything else on this?
Do we need to approve it?
Hmm? Do we need to?
We have some changes to make, but, yeah, we can approve this because it's going to the board.
Do we want to approve with the changes? Okay. Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Everybody, eyes? Any names?
Nay.
Okay.
Because it mentions short-term rentals, and I can't, I can't do that.
Okay, so that's, we'll put this, and this will be submitted to the board as part of the board packet in our regular monthly report that goes to the, before the next board meeting.
So Jane, you have this on your computer?
I do.
To make the updates to.
Yes, I do. And once I make the updates, I can send everybody on the planning commission a PDF of it. Okay, and the next item on the agenda was to review the.
Large, I guess the large, yeah.
Land use maps prepared by NEMCOG. As part of the contract that NEMCOG has with the board to help with the master plan, they prepare these maps, and they were sent to the planning commission in order for us to take a look at them, so we can see what it, make sure that these are correct. This, this should reflect the way things are right now, the existing land use, and use that before they start going on and updating, their next step is, in, in the plan, is to update the future land use maps. We need to make sure the current ones. So if any of the, if you want to go and take a look at them, and.
Just, I, just because I, I was up at the county for the last planning meeting, and, and I talked to Mike Turris, and I can't remember the guy that's the chair for the, his name's right on the tip of my tongue, but, that's the chair for the planning commission up there, so we had a little conversation about the master plan, the status of the master plan, where they're at with theirs. They feed, ours kind of feeds into theirs. They look at ours to make sure that we're, we're incorporating everything that should be in the master plan. One of the things that they said, Mike Turris said, was we need to look at those maps, the, the current, and we need to give them an idea of where things need to change. So we already know housing is an issue, and we, we know, we have different ideas over what workforce housing is. We did a survey, and the survey is a legitimate survey. I know there's people out there that say it's not, but it is. We need to take that survey into consideration, what people said they wanted for housing. And essentially, what I got out of it was they're looking for housing for nurses and police officers and, yeah, working people. That's what they're looking for, not necessarily low-income people, but people who work. So we need to look at that. I feel that we need to look at that from a perspective of where do we need this housing? I, I can tell you right now, my nephew is living next door to John at home with his parents. He's in year two, teaching over at Petoskey, because he can't find any place to live in Petoskey. Every time he, yeah, every time he finds a house that he thinks he can. They're overbid, and they're going for way more than they actually should be. So when we look at where we need housing, we should be looking at those areas. Like, we want people from Petoskey that work at the hospital, the schools, the college. We want them to live in our township and drive. You're cutting twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes off the drive, right? So if we look at that side for housing, and the same thing with the north end, because you have the same, you have industry, you have hospital, you have schools that are north of, that are in Sheboygan area. So we should be looking for housing opportunities in those two areas so that we can pull those people into our community, supports our schools, increases the tax base. They're already working, they live here, work there, kind of thing. I think that's probably what most communities are doing. There is some, I, I know Monty Black was talking about housing apartments, maybe housing over top of some of the commercial buildings. I think that they're looking at that as well. So from a, from a lower income, I want to, don't want to say low income, but.
Middle income.
Yeah, those types, you know, the restaurant workers, people like that, that are looking for housing. So if you look at these maps, I was kind of just looking at them a little bit.
The audience can look at these too.
Yeah.
Everybody can.
Let's just stay on a big, because it's not a bitty prints if we have, or like, really aren't. If it's smaller, my eyes are worse, it's a bad combo, you know?
So do you see more, like, the vacant areas, those are the white areas that where we could, where we potentially could make a change?
Yeah. I was surprised how much of state of Michigan through on this, where I was looking at. Because it's hard to make the distinction between the green and the small green, you know, some.
So some of these whites over here that are, Little Road is the border, you know, and you're heading off to the east twice, because asking Little Road is the border. There's a lot of whites in the region, yeah. We know that.
Property's pay. And my right here blank here, but you're right with other residential, so a lot of that is agriculture, isn't it?
No, it's not. It's white, it's vacant.
That's what I was looking at. I thought some of that, more of that was, but it's not.
No, it's vacant, so your agriculture, the light greens, or this is agriculture, these are. But all of this, there's opportunities down there. The dark green is all state of Michigan. I don't know if that's.
And then there's these little pieces in the middle of it.
Yeah, I know, which is crazy.
You know?
Yeah, I know. I got this, I thought this was.
It's really nice to be able to see it there.
So, so what Mike asked is, is look at your map, tell us where you want, so like, maybe we have some that's over here zone more residential.
Yeah, because this is.
And then you get, and then you get over here, like, this is just blown up for the town area. I mean, you've got, you're not going to change any of our commercial area. You're not going to change, you know, you're not going to change, obviously not the state of Michigan, but there are some over here that, this is not going to get changed, because that's almost all land conservancy or Columbus Beach.
There's small land or.
Yeah.
So land conservancy definitely brings up a big point. Do we know what properties in here are assigned?
Uh, we don't.
Security because.
I do, because I do have a living there, so.
Because the conservancy would be pretty much protected land.
Well, we can't, we can't, that's what I mean. So it's protected land, so we should note it so that we would know.
Just want to say to the county.
Yeah, it's out of question.
All of a sudden, Little Travers is getting lots of gifted things.
Yeah, they have that. They recently.
They've gotten a lot of properties. Put some big properties aside.
It seems like it should be over here because it would be protected land. We can't go, just overlay on it.
Yeah, so I don't know. That's one thing we could ask NEMCOG to do, is if we identify where the conservancy's on.
Yeah, so that we would add.
We wouldn't screw with that plan.
Little Travers has a big map of the whole area.
So we could just send them that map.
Yeah, we could get the color coming up here and include that. Because some of this white, we could be looking at this developmental, and it's real tall, you know?
Most of this stuff over here is actually, just when you get in here, I, I think there's so much here on the county, on in here, sort of like that, these are very good. So there are some stretches in here that is conservancy, and then I think there's some over here on, on resort that. I don't know if it's conservancy or like the cathedrals, they own the chapel over there, but.
Now, now, to make this clear, that's, the white area is all private property though.
Yeah.
Okay, and so like, if, like, we own about fifteen acres, I don't know, but it is, would, you, um, that would be considered vacant land?
Well, it's probably not. If you're in a, so if you look at these, you have agricultural, so if you could be forced to add.
We are forced, we are considered forced, yeah.
So that would, that would show up, you would, they show up as forced ag.
Like, do you show up as light green?
No, we don't. As residential land.
See, this is, this is property, our property, this is our property, and this stuff.
So what do you believe?
I don't know.
That's from a G-throw.
No. Oh, wait, and this is, this is main way path, that would be main way path right here. And, and actually, okay, this is, this main way path, this is not really accurate. This is my mom and dad's property. This is my mother's property. This is our property. This is our property that has the pipeline going through it. This is my mom and dad's property here, and my mom and dad's property there. And maybe even here too. I don't know how, how that works out, but they, they showed this as vacant, but actually, line five goes through there. You're not going to.
Well, that may be why it's vacant.
But then it should be on this side too, but it's not. So you have to take into consideration where the power lines are because here. Here, and it's having a power line, you're not going to be able to fill under some of that property even because it's restricted.
Well, you know, some of this is right here. No, this right here is all conservancy stuff. And we know that.
It'd be nice to get a little bit of that.
Um, and we know.
I know, I think we have to, because people have been landed in the past.
Yeah.
Some of it, some of it that, uh.
Right.
Some of it even like, um, Trish Walcott's property, she put that in a, it's not, it's not conservancy property, but it's in, yeah. But in conservation. Well, one is the family still owns the conservancy, so conservation is, they have primary management. And they can't, yeah, and they can't, I think they can, they're limited to how many even homes they can put on the property.
She's providing that, she's going to try and nip them, she, she wants to be upstuffed ahead of them, she wants to be higher.
But that's just, um. That was just, um.
It might be interesting to find out.
And tax, you know, records.
And, uh, to find out. Why it's vacant, in other words, is it, is it because I want to own a hundred and twenty acres, you know, for my pleasure and it's residential? Or it's my, I'm a gambler?
Because usually when you look up the tax records, it'll tell you.
Yeah. Well, that was their recommendation.
So this must, vacant must mean it doesn't have any.
Okay.
The way I checked it.
Yeah.
Okay, so then this is the blown up version of just like the cost.
This is, this is more of the, the village, not over that.
Here, so this will be whatever the township, would it change? Yeah, that's not going to bit, maybe these right here change.
This is going to be actually multi-controlling, um, little, you know, here, for hands, possibly three towns.
We've got, we've got that, we're going back to.
Okay.
And I think directly over here on this side, they call it vacant, but the man who owns that is considering, and I'm not saying this is for sure going in, but he's considering doing those, um.
Man cave.
Yeah, condo things, where it was a house built inside of a pole barn type thing, but it's high end. And I, here it's going to be seventeen to twenty million dollar project, that's what he's looking at here. That's not.
So we're getting rid of some of our, is this industrial too? I hope it's commercial. Uh, this is. Well, so the industrial, or.
Well, you have a contact, your economic development.
Yeah.
Commission that's just sort of established, it might be worthwhile talking about what are the meanings of the map and what.
They should have this map too, to be honest.
So they would have, they would have availability of like what's available for the job if someone.
Well, that is zone.
And then.
Somewhat else, so if you don't go planning, somebody has to consider the zoning change.
And just because it's considered vacant doesn't mean it's not forestry, and we have to maintain our culture here as well. So it's not like everything's up for development either, you know, so.
No, but it might be interesting to find out, some of these areas, are they all big parcels? And are they generational where it's been handed down?
Right, because some of these parcels, even though they're different.
Are you looking at the icons? Look. What are your effects?
I pay those people slowly.
I know, yeah. It was in nineteen seventy, February twenty fifth, nineteen seventy one, the resort. This is when they approved the resolution. I have the right date.
We've got the first one here, and then we get the first one here. It's local government.
Well, all is, yes, the hedge is, when they say local government, they consider, um, the, uh.
The chain of.
The chamber, yes. So if you look at the.
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our, that's our, um, plan along with the DNR trail.
Yeah.
On the other side of the DNR trail.
So a club roof here, and there's the green spaces, the trail, and then on the other side there's, yeah. I could be on that strip and probably, I kind of got it.
I was just looking at that because of the parking, I was just thinking of the.
I think there's going to be a parking study done on that just to see if.
You said that?
Yeah, which is good, we need to know before we sell things what, if it would be beneficial to the township.
Right, I remember that. So I, you know, like I said, I just, I feel like we need to be really looking at, um, the north. Yeah, looking at, yeah, where are we going to, where are we going to develop, um, these housing? Like I said, why should my nephew be struggling with that?
Well, and this is happening all over the state issue.
It's all, it's all an opportunity to fix this for.
Well, we're, yeah, like I said, we've already, we're, we're, as the township board, we're very, um, up on, on, on that issue and we're trying to take some of that into consideration.
Are you listening to him? I'm certain as to why some of these are like, I'm curious.
Because they're circling, they're all.
Probably, it's probably considered housing area, but they don't have a house on it.
No, it's like this part, this one is like totally surrounded in Commerce Park, but it's blank. So is it commercial or isn't it?
Is, this is where the hotel is. Um, the hotel is like right here, next to that, right? And then you, if you think about this, you've got Carquest.
You've got the VA clinic, Carquest, M and M, all those.
All those are there, and Budweiser.
Budweiser, absolutely.
Budweiser plant, so I don't know if this.
This one like just sort of catches my eye because it's like surrounded by commercial, but it's vacant.
And, and that might be because it is landlocked or something.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that could be true.
And that way, people may own it, but it's landlocked.
But it's landlocked. Yeah, okay, you'd have to have access through some other property, yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Interesting, okay.
So that's one of the other places, we don't want to lose these because.
Could we have these at each meeting? Because as we're talking about some places, it'd be really nice to like look at it, you know?
Well, I think they should stay in the office and then all, all the committees can have access to it.
Well, why wouldn't they be framed and put in here then?
Yeah.
Because this is where all of us meet, so if it was framed, you know, plastic coated and a prop, so then all our fingers go all over it, we haven't destroyed it.
It's that, where does that one back there, there's a couple back there on the wall, are they old, just old ones of these?
I don't know.
Could be.
Interesting, I don't see a date on any of these either. Oh, seven, twenty three, yeah. It was covered over here.
I want to go look at those marks back there and see what they have.
See what they can tell.
On those existing maps? So those, those are natural pieces, right?
Oh, so those were from the old, yeah.
We did a, we did a two thousand ten.
Because this was the existing, and this was the future land.
Dawn, we've got a couple more things on the agenda.
I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it.
For a flat, so. We, we could look at the maps all day, right?
I could, I could, I'm a map person.
I, I, I understand.
I think we need to, I'd like to make a motion that we contact the conservancy and, and get that on the map because I don't want any of us planning some, you know, planning some sort of recommendation or change or something.
Right, well, I think we can almost just do that ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they have the maps online, so you can pull them up and, most of us are pretty familiar with where the conservancy property is.
Yeah.
Well, the, the key thing is we need to make sure that things are correct before we move on to the future.
Yeah.
So, all right, the next item on the agenda is, um, we have airport real estate. Dawn, did you have something on that?
Airport real estate, oh man, what did I have on that? Oh, that was that, um, the thin, um, strip that apparently you guys are looking at selling.
Which one, the one on, on the west side, is that what you're talking about, a lot across the highway?
On the west side of I seventy five?
We're considering it, we haven't voted, we haven't even had a discussion on it. The airport, um, hangar owner said that they would not have a problem with that, um, if, if the township put that up, uh, for sale. Um, and that money, of course, would have to stay with the airport by regulations of state, um, funding, so, for airports, so. But that's the only thing we would consider at this point.
FOIA information from the.
Yeah, I did, I did, I know you guys were, I FOIA'd information from, uh, MDOT and they did, um, send, um, communications. So that's why I'm asking, because it looked like you're asking to sell that, and I don't.
I think we're getting information on what we can do with that. Um, we haven't voted as a forward to send it, um, to sell it, um, as far as I remember. We did, as a matter of fact, we did, um, a couple of years back, we did vote to sell that property, but then it got dropped. Um, for some reason, it never materialized, so.
Um, I, I think, I went back and looked at the minutes and we didn't vote to sell, we said we were going to look into it. So there was no motion to sell.
I think Bob is looking into it, so.
Well, how long does our airport, um, I know we, we accepted a grant from the Federal Aviation to have the airport. When does that expire?
No, so, no, that's, we, the airport was donated in the thirties.
Okay, it was donated to be used as an airport or donated to the township?
Donated to be used as an airport in the thirties. Um, I, you had that.
There's, there's newspaper articles and clippings, apparently, um, Senator, was it Senator Representative State Campbell donated a large portion of land to Burt Lake State Park? And then around the same time, or maybe a couple of years after that, also donated the land for the airport.
Okay.
Um, and, and so that's, and, and the, and that was back in the.
There's a grant, we accepted a grant a few years back. Um, it expires in twenty twenty five, um, and so.
And that was for, I think that was for refurbishment, right, of the runway?
Repaving the runway.
Runway. Okay, so just.
If we were going to do anything with that airport property, um, it would have to, we would have to, um, go to MDOT Aeronautics. Um, they would, um, do a study, they would have first right of refusal, um, they could take it over themselves. Um, then if it was approved to sell it, whatever we decide to sell, let's say that west side, little, little stretch over by where you live, Jane. Um, then if it's approved to sell, then we have to get fair market value for it. We have to go out and get fair market value. Um, so it would be put out for sale for anybody to bid on for that. So that's kind of like the general process of that.
How many hangar, hangar property, how many designated areas for hangers are there?
Right now, I think there's twelve.
Well, there's twelve hangers, but that whole area is designated for, I mean, anybody, yeah. If you were going to expand the airport, they could go into that, obviously they can't do it where the wetlands are, but where, where it's not wetlands, um, they could expand there.
There's, there's a lot of vacant area up there that they could build, uh, hangers that's designated for hangar areas, not, uh, plotted out because everybody's hangar is different sizes and all that, but it's not actually plotted out.
None of them are plotted.
No, it's not.
No, they're not plotted, I mean, they just put them in, yeah. That whole area is designated for hangers.
Would the FAA, federal government have to be involved if the sale was involved?
It's just a general airport, general.
It's, it's through the MDOT Aeronautics Division.
So there's no involvement of federal government, like emergency landing areas or anything?
No, it's, the airport's not at that level. Okay, all right, well then, the other thing that we did do is we did tell NEMCOG, um, because you have the contract that expanded it, started at thirty-one acres, I think, and it's up to, I think you said the last meeting, seventy-one acres.
I think it's sixty-one acres, but yeah, close, maybe, I don't know, something like that.
You said seventy-one last time, so it's been all over the map, I guess I want to know how much.
Well.
Because if you look at that, it's, that's, if you look at that map, it's a huge chunk of land.
I could find out in like two seconds if you wanted me to go find out exactly how many acres, okay? And then that would put that to rest.
Because we need to know that, because it's, it's forested, it's forested right now.
It's going to be forested when we're done, we're not, they're cutting it.
You keep saying that, but I, I beg to differ on that.
Well, you're not cutting it either.
No, but I know what they're leaving.
Do we want to take a short recess while she recovers that?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
We can wait for her, just pause.
We can, look at the map again.
Go look at the map, right?
Go look at the map.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, I want to take that one off, put it over there.
Put that one on, right.
Is there a PDF of that map in place or a, uh?
They did, in one of the chapters that we reviewed.
The land you said you can't, it's really tiny, so that's why they sent the.
If you have the original PDF, you hold it up.
Oh, yeah, like this one that, that I didn't print in color, but yeah, I have one in color too, somewhere in there. I printed it in color after I realized that, because I was like, okay, I can't read.
Did you just miss it?
I think it's back here.
They saw it.
It's in the papers.
No, not it, not it. I mean, it's in our.
Yeah.
That one.
When Jamie said the last time I did, the day before, I was like, there's no way I'll get.
No way. I mean, you have to read it a couple times.
Yeah, I know, because it's not like normal kind of.
No.
Yeah. This is different than that, this is the village. But even when it is in color, it's still so small in here that the bear one is so much easier.
You'd rather go to the county zone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, I saw those in there, because those are from twenty ten, it's the same thing, I mean, it's what, uh, what was her name, Mary?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's.
I don't know how, if those are easily removed from there though, I don't know. If they're matted on the back, you might take all the matting off and to get them on.
Yeah.
We could Scotch tape them over the top of them. For the time being.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, it is.
Especially down.
Yeah, when you get to the tight areas where you really need to be focused, it like, yeah. Makes it very hard. Is Casey still here?
Yes.
Fine, we can go get these conservancy stuff, because that's a non-negotiable, you know? Might as well know it.
Until it is.
Well, of course, I guess, yeah. But.
Bob's looking up the number of acreage right now.
So if I understand it correctly, the property would. So, if I understand it correctly, the property, all of that property is donated for an airport. So, it was designated as an airport when it was donated? Okay, I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
71.
71, okay, that's what I was thinking it was.
Starts the 6th.
On the September 6th, they start cutting.
What date did you say?
September 6th, they start cutting.
They're gonna start cutting September 6th?
Yes. All the contracts have been sold.
Did the board get a copy of the bids that the forester got for those?
I'm not aware of it. I, maybe, I don't know. We hired him to handle it, so, he was our contractor for that, so...
So, he got multiple, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So, how'd you guys get from 30 acres to 71? I mean, who approved that? It was approved, the minutes, it's approved for 30 acres, at a cost of $2,500. So, now what's the cost?
There is no cost. We're gonna make money on it.
No, there's a cost. You can't...
We're making money on it.
It doesn't matter, there's a cost.
We're making money on it.
There is a cost. I'm sorry, but there is.
If you need to know more information about that, you can talk to Bob.
Okay. Because I'm really concerned about this, that there's, we went from 30 acres that was approved at a cost of $2,500. There's a cost. That 15% that that guy's getting paid was based on 30 acres.
Well, the whole 71 may not be included in that cutting, is it? Or is it?
Yeah, that's what they're, that's why we asked.
I missed that? I thought maybe it was just 30 of the 71.
No, 71 acres is being cut, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess we're not gonna solve any more of that here, so, let's go on to Agenda Item Number 9. And there's Master Plan Status and Schedule. At this point, we have two chapters to review. Actually, Chapter 1, which is just an introduction thing, and Chapter 8.
78.
78, yeah. And we received notice a week or so ago that Supervisor Kramer has notified NEMCOG to stop work on any, any work on the master plan until further notice. So, I guess the status and schedule is up in the air, we don't...
Yeah, so I want to, I want to talk about that. Because Janet, Jane emailed you and asked you to look into it, and your response was that... Yep, so Jane asked Janet to look into it, because we were informed that it was paused. And it's paused because there are some of us, and it's not just Planning Commission, there are others too, I don't know who all they, who all are, have not signed the agreement. And I'm not signing the agreement. I'm not gonna sign the agreement until we get word back from the Attorney General that it's a legal agreement. I don't think this was passed by the attorney, what you guys were, you know, what you were requiring. You said that he was acting with the, within his statutory duty as the Chief Budget Officer. That contract was passed by the board in October of 2022. It is not a Planning Commission contract. It's not a Planning Commission expense. It will be put under the Planning Commission GL number, because it's attributed to the Planning Commission, but it was passed by the board. And we've already talked to MTA, and they have said that no one person has the authority to reverse a board-approved action. That needs to go to a public meeting and be reversed by the board. Furthermore, the, you said that the Appropriation Act authorized it. The Appropriations Act does not authorize anything like that. It authorizes the budget. It does not authorize one person to make adjustments to the budget. All of that has to be board action. So, the General Appropriation Act does not grant any kind of authority for one member of the board. Considering NEMCOG was told by Supervisor Kramer to stop work on the master plan, that's, I don't know when you guys all talked about that, but that's almost, that to me is an OMA violation. Somewhere, you guys have talked about it, made this decision, and then you sent out letters with legal, they're legal letters, to board members that should have gone before the attorney, before they were sent out. At the Planning Commission meeting, the last one, you, you left early, so you didn't hear, but I said, "All of the documents have been sent to the Attorney General's office. I checked with them last week, and they, they have been assigned to an attorney, so they're looking at them to make a determination." What I asked them to do was to render an opinion as to whether or not a Township Board of Trustees can legally tie funding of various budgets in the General Fund to an agreement to policies that are subjective, vague, and maybe unconstitutional, because we already, we've already had other attorneys tell us that. So, you, I need you to go back to the board, and they need, if they're gonna stop the contract, because right now you're in breach.
We froze the contract. We didn't stop it.
You can't.
This is what happened. You've made a lot of suppositions in that.
No, I didn't. We talked to attorneys. We talked to MTA.
We talked to our own attorney, and we follow our own attorney's advice.
Where's his, where is his letter that says this is okay?
He didn't write a letter, he talked to us. So, this is the thing. We have an Appropriations Act that as a condition of funding, this was added to the Appropriations Act that we normally pass, as a condition of funding, every elected and appointed official, Board of Trustees, Parks Commission, Planning Commission, Airport Manager, members of the Citizens Task Force, and employees in the township working for General Fund shall certify in writing that they have received, read, and understand the Township's Board Administrative Policies Manual dated January 13, 2023, hereby referred to as the Policies Manual, as amended, by filling out and signing the yearly acknowledgment form no later than August 1, 2023. This includes the Code of Ethics listed in Chapter 3 and the appropriate disclosures if required. The Chief of Police will also fill out and sign the yearly acknowledgment form.
Don't have a problem with that paragraph.
You didn't sign the paper.
Because the paper, go back and read the paper. The paper says, "You agree, not only do you, have you read, received, read, and understand, you also agree to the policies, and the policies are subject to change, at which I have no opportunity to re-sign another document." I automatically, based on that, I automatically agree to any changes. That is an open-ended document. This is a contract, and you can't expect people to sign open-ended documents. I've been doing this a long time, Janet. I wouldn't sign that document if I were drunk.
And that's fine. You have a choice to do that.
That's right, but what you don't get to do is freeze or stop spending without board approval. This all has to go before the board and be voted on by the entire board.
So, your opinion's...
No, no, your, your policy says that. It is a board. It is not one person. Your policy says all decisions have to be made by the board.
I told Jane in that letter, which you received a copy, that if you had any more questions, you can contact Supervisor Kramer. I said that. Did anybody do that?
No, I'm telling you, that's your, that's your job as the ex officio here, is to be the liaison between us and the board.
Exactly. I gave you my answer to that. If you need more information than that, you need to go to him.
No, I'm going to the attorney, because at some point, you're violating rights.
But, but the point is, this is what I also found out. You think that some of these policies are against your First Amendment or whatever rights. I understand that, I understand that. Whatever, whatever, you disagree with some of the policies. That's fine. You can disagree all day long. The point is, by the mere fact that you sit in these seats, make you subject to rules, regulations, and policies of the Township Board. If you do not like it, you can resign.
No, I'm not resigning.
But the point is, the government is gonna keep going the way they're going unless we get some opinion from the Attorney General, or from a judge, or something like that, saying that this is out of line. But until then, we're gonna continue with the way we're doing, and we're not gonna change it because someone doesn't like it. We're going to do it according to the Township Board's vote.
It's not, is your real concern that it could be changed without your...
There's that, and I don't...
Because I would agree to that. That's a problem, I would think.
It is a problem, and the other, the other piece of it is, is in, is in your public participation in the policies. It says the board can, they can interrupt a speaker if they think, there's a number of things. If it's past three minutes, if it's, there's a number of things. The last one was irrelevant. Nobody gets to decide, the board does not get to decide what's relevant and irrelevant. That is, that's an OMA violation. You interrupt somebody that's standing up there talking and says something that you don't like, you have violated OMA. So, that's something that, that we all learned a long time ago. So, you don't get to do that. So, there's things in the policy, I mean, even an attorney that's on a board looked at it and said, "I can't, this stuff is crazy."
We've had four attorneys look at it and approve it, four.
I, well, I would like to see that they approve what they said, because I don't know that they left that in there. I can tell you that Rob Booth was not, he was not, when I said that part of it, he goes, "I can't do that," because I've asked him since. Before I even, I started talking to attorneys when I first read that, because I'm not willing to sign up for something that violates anyone's rights.
You're only obligated to go by policies that are subject to your position, period. So, if there's a township policy that is subject to your position on the Planning Commission that you don't like, then you should say so. But other than that, you, you don't have to go by that policy.
Okay, define...
It's not what the form says.
That's not what the form says, the entire policy.
Policies. The policy says, "According to..." Oh, I can't find it right now.
Janet, I've already, I've already, I can't tell you how many times that Bob has sent me, he sent me an email and told me, "Read 7.5." I did. I didn't violate 7.5. But according to him, I violated 7.5. So, it, I can't sign up for something that is so open to interpretation that somebody can say I violated something when I didn't violate it, and it's the same thing that she happened.
Well, maybe you should talk to him and find out what it is that he has an issue with.
Well, his response to her was...
There's no communication here. There's no communication.
His response to her was, "Talk to the attorney. The attorney's gonna talk to you." And that was a week, that was a week before he sent me the same, the same issue.
The point, the point is, you know, whether we signed it or not, the point is, NEMCOG has a contract with the Tuspor Township Board, and that contract obligates the board. And not, MTA, according to the MTA's attorneys, not one individual board member is authorized to change the contract. Pausing it is a change.
You're in breach.
Stopping it, pausing it, changing it, all of that can be done, but not by one individual board member. It has to be done and approved by the entire board. It's a contract that you have as a board with NEMCOG.
And then the other thing that I have the issue with is the fact that you're, you guys are more than welcome to change the budget. You, you have the right to change the budget anytime you want to, but it has to be done in a public meeting. You can't just say, "We're suspending all spending," until you sign the doc. That's blackmail, for the love of God. "Until you sign this document, we're not gonna allow the Planning Commission to spend any money." Okay, you can't do that. He can't do that on his own. You have to do that as a board. It has to be brought into a public meeting, discussed, and voted on by the entire board, and you know this. You've had the same training I have.
The other question I have is, you suspended the budget for the Planning Commission. Have you suspended budget spending for the Parks Commission?
Not to my knowledge, not yet.
So, that means everybody in the Parks Commission has signed the form?
No, two people have not.
All right, then you're selectively stopping the budgeting for the Planning Commission because...
Different rules with the Parks Commission than there is with the Planning Commission. And so, there's a different situation that way, and so, we're, we're taking that under advisement, because there are different rules we have to go by on that.
Okay, so, the Planning, the Planning Commission has three members that have not signed the form, so you're stopping work arbitrarily on a master plan that the township needs and the Planning Commission is required to do. The Parks Commission has members that have not signed the same form, but their funding is continuing, and I understand, they are elected...
Because there's different rules we have to go by on that.
I understand, they're elected members, we are appointed members, but your policy handbook and your form does not differentiate. It says all officials, elected, appointed, whatever. So, this form applies to all officials exactly the same way, whether you're appointed or elected.
But how we deal with it is a different matter.
Well, obviously, you're dealing with it differently. Whether that's legal or not, I, I'm not an attorney, I don't know. But the point is, it should be consistent.
It can't be consistent, because there's different rules we have to go by.
Well, then, the form is arbitrarily says one thing.
Okay? What I'm asking you to do is get with the board, and you guys, because right now, the way this is, the way this has played out and the way things have been written, it's an OMA violation. You did something behind closed doors.
We did not do anything behind closed doors. Quit saying that there's OMA violations, because there is not. We followed the OMA thing to the letter. The thing of it is...
That's not what your email says. Your email said the board. It says the board.
The board, because the board approved the Appropriations Act.
The Appropriations, the Appropriations Act does not give one person the authority to make those decisions.
Bob is the Chief Budget Officer. He's in charge of making sure the appropriations are done correctly. He did it according to the board's recommendations and vote on the Appropriations Act. Now, that is not a violation of OMA. No one got together behind closed doors. You're starting false information. You're starting a bunch of crap that's not true, and I'm not gonna sit here and be accused of things that are not supposed to...
Do what you're supposed to do. Get the board together, have a meeting...
Don't give me orders, Dawn. If you wanna ask me something, ask me something, but do not sit here and give me orders. You just accused me of an OMA violation.
I said it appears, because you sent the board...
You didn't say appear. You did, you went and did this and all that. I'm not taking that crap. I did not do that.
Guys, communication goes both ways. Goes both ways. Does not feel, as a, as a new Planning Commission person, did not feel that Jane should have found out that that happened by calling NEMCOG for update and status. So, when we talk about communication, it is both ways, guys. It's both ways. That should not have happened to any, any commissioner.
And it wasn't even just NEMCOG. It wasn't even...
That shouldn't happen, okay? There's legal and there's right to do. And right to do is even stronger than legal in my mind, okay? It's the way we treat each other as individuals and as people, and therefore, what we do and how we do it is as important as what we do, because we're dealing with people. This is a community.
It's not just NEMCOG either. It's the county. The county knew that it was, that you guys stopped work before we even knew it.
I didn't know about that.
No one on the Planning Commission knew. No one on the Planning Commission knew.
No.
And that's just not right, guys. It's just not right.
Yeah.
It has to do with our work and our agenda and what we're focused on, and then all of a sudden, it's just vapor. Just doesn't feel right, okay?
And plus, like I said, this is all stuff that has to be done in an open meeting, board decision, not one person. I mean, there's, that, that, you know, there's no ifs, ands, and buts about it.
All right. So, I guess we will update the master plan schedule at a later time. We get more information.
So, how are we gonna go back and address that with the board, guys?
That's, that's why she's...
I care that.
I think as a, as a group, we could make a motion of what we would like to see done. Instead of, it feels like we've spent way too much time and money with legalities and attorneys instead of just talking to one another. This is my personal opinion, okay?
I agree.
And that by going to all these attorneys, we are stopping production on anything really moving forward and getting done.
Patty, do you think we could solve the master plan problem ourselves without NEMCOG?
Potentially, potentially we could. I mean, I don't know enough about that contract and what's been done and not done yet to make a comment on that, but it does feel like some of it is a cut and paste from other organizations, because some pieces of it don't feel like they fit with the small community. But that's not an issue to me. The issue is whether or not... The issue is whether or not the way we went about stopping that progress and the communication of it with the people who are involved in that work should have happened differently. Should've just happened differently. That's all there is to it.
Well, personally, having done a lot of this type of work throughout my career, I'm gonna tell you that the answer to that is no. We couldn't have done it. We don't have the expertise. I mean, they have had to pull maps from the county. They've had to gather information from other areas, stuff that none of us have access to.
Normally, a Planning Commission, for example, the Planning Commission at Sheboygan County, if they're doing their master plan, they have a department, they have a paid planning...
A paid person.
Paid person. They have staff. We are volunteers, you know? So when we need to put a master plan together, you need to call on the experts to guide you through that process. There's a lot of legal process that goes through as far as the publishing and the chapters. And that's why they do that. That's their expertise. They do that, pull it together, bring us the chapters, we review them, and go through and make changes. You know, if we were...
Well, the county has hired NEMCOG to do their master plan. They're not doing it themselves either.
And they have a whole staff of people to help them. We don't have that.
So is the board concerned that the amount of money that's been spent is an issue?
They shouldn't be, because we put this out for bid. So we had two bids, and NEMCOG was the low...
Sixteen thousand dollars.
Versus twenty, what was it, twenty-four?
Twenty-four hundred.
Oh, well, pretty much all of it. I mean, you know, if they were to cut loose right now, you've got two out of eight chapters, you only have seven and eight. And eight is implementation. So eight is, covers the cost of, you're still gonna have to pay those costs. Eight is, covers the cost of the public hearing, the announcements, all the things that go along.
There's a lot of announcements.
Yeah, all the things that go along, sending it out to other areas.
Getting all the input.
All of that.
The future maps.
So the future maps is the only thing left that they have to do based on feedback that we give them. So you're talking about, you know, of the sixteen thousand dollars, you're probably talking about we would still owe them, even if we could do the future maps ourselves. You're talking about a couple thousand dollars that we're gonna pay out anyways and have to find somebody to do all of that work. All of the, making sure, there's gonna have to be lawyers involved, because I can tell you, I'm certainly not gonna get involved in, you know, hearing notices and things like that. I don't think any of those are.
That's why we hired the experts. And we did go out for bid, and the board approved the contract, so...
So did the board take action, Janet, or was it just an individual?
It was Supervisor Kramer, under his authority as chief budget officer. He decided to do that.
And how was that communicated to anybody?
He told me just a few days ago that he had done that, just before you found out, I think. I'm not sure on the dates.
I'm not interested in dates.
He's just encouraging compliance. He's trying to encourage the compliance that everybody knows, understands, and adheres to the township policies, the rules and regulations that the Township Board has put in place. And that is what he wants. And that is what the board wants. And this is an action that puts a little bit of pressure on some of these departments. And most everybody has signed this. They don't have a problem going by the rules and regulations. If there's a certain rule or regulation that bothers you, then, you know, bring it up to the board, we can discuss it, maybe that's his issue. But to flat-out say, "I'm not ever gonna sign it, you can't make me have a temper tantrum over it," and then risk funding of your department is like putting, it's just...
You'd say there was a temper tantrum on your side, so I'm just sitting as an impartial person, and I could say that...
But the Township Board, Patty, the Township Board is the head of the spear. They're the ones that make the rules and regulations, just like a CEO or a board of directors in a corporation. They make the rules, and the people underneath them are...
But this is not a corporation. This is a garden of the problem.
What I don't understand is how this puts pressure on the Planning Commission. Because this is a contract with the board. The board is responsible for that contract, not the Planning Commission. All of us could walk away tomorrow, and you're still gonna have to do a master plan. It's not pressure on me. You know, I mean, I've spent a lot of hours, a lot of time, Dawn has, John has, everybody has, working on this, on our, you know, on our time. I mean, I'd just soon be out on the boat or doing something more fun than this.
And we spent a lot of time...
But we're spending a lot of time.
We spent a lot of time on the policies. We spent months and months and months on those policies and tried to hold them down and had multiple attorneys look at them. And, you know, and we put them into place so we'd have some kind of foundation of this government is working on. And maybe it's not perfect. Maybe it needs amended. Maybe you should bring up those concerns to the Township Board, and maybe they'll be looked at. But what I'm saying is, right now, those are in place, and we're all, by subject of sitting here at this table, subject to be under those rules, regulations, and policies, period.
Okay, so I think then, the next action would be to publicly address the issues of concern that people have to see if there could be changes. The other issue to me is, there are people on this Planning Commission who did sign that document who have now been stopped from going forward on this work that we agreed to do because that budget has been stopped.
Right.
That doesn't feel like what I signed up for.
Well, me either, as a matter of fact. We need to get our work done, and we have to find the best course. I think if people have concerns about signing that, I think they need to discuss that and send a letter of specific concerns, not general concerns. I would sign that if this was changed. If that was changed to this, I would have no problem. But to just say, "I'm not gonna sign it, I think it's against my rights, it's going to..." Now, if it's at the Attorney General's office, you know, hey, we might sit here for months.
Well, they did say that it usually takes a couple months. I sent it back on July 13, when we first got it. When I talked to them last week, she said that it had been assigned to an attorney and that the attorney is in the review process and to give it a few weeks. I was fine with that, except for then I had to send them all the other documents that you guys sent, because you took action. So we were asking them, "Give us your opinion on whether or not tying this document, tying funding, is legal to this document." And before they could even do that, you took action.
Did you notify the Township Board that that's specifically what you were...
I told you...
You said that this went to the Attorney General's office, and until I get notification from them, and you'd said nothing about specifics. You said nothing to us. You never wrote us a letter.
I actually did.
Why don't we just draft a list of the specifics?
I actually did.
Instead of it all going outside to the third parties around the world in circles by two different groups, why don't we just do a list of what are the concerning issues?
I think some of our communication has provided some specifics.
Yeah. I mean, when we were here the last time, I read my issues. I read them right off the thing and said, you know, "The open-ended agreement." Yeah, that was, that's a huge problem. And then I also read the part about public policy, and then there was another one that was open to interpretation. There were like three things that I read in there that I had a problem with. And they're pretty much the same things that, you know, most of us had problems with.
And so then I think we need to ask the board if there's any legal room on those specific issues.
I mean, we did, it's not like we didn't sign a document. We did. We all, all three of us or four, did you sign it? No, you didn't, because you said you were gonna be gone. We did sign a document that...
A conflict of interest.
We didn't have a conflict of interest and sent it in. So we just reworded it and said, "We don't have conflict of interest." And yes, we're gonna follow the policies, you know, pursuant to, I think it was Section 3 or something, the ethics policy. There are other things that I don't like. And what I don't agree with is that the board ever puts anybody, a citizen that stands here, or any of us, in the position of having to hire a lawyer. That is just ridiculous. We shouldn't be in that position, ever.
Last thing we all need to talk is to have attorneys involved in everything.
I don't wanna have an attorney either, but...
Okay. Well, I think we've, what else we can do at this point is encourage the ex officio to take...
What else is the, is the Planning Commission expected to do without those other chapters? I mean, why would we have another meeting?
We can still look at this. I mean, we have a contract. The Township has a contract. NEMCOG is working on this stuff. I mean, they've paused work on this, but that doesn't mean that we can't. We know what we need to do on this. So we can still look at the current map, figure out what we want the future to look at, make our recommendation, yeah, get them ready, so that we can get this thing through. I mean, it's...
I'd like us to focus on something we can actually do.
And the other thing is, we're required to do is the annual report, which we've done.
Which you did. And I thought you did a very nice job.
And, you know, the CIP has done budget, so, you know, those are all in place. So I think we can, you know, take a look and see what the next, you know...
At least then if we, yeah, at least then if we get the future land map stuff taken care of, it's, you know, it's ready to go out the door, right? We can shoot it out the door to NEMCOG. They can get the updates done and they start rolling. The objective was to get through this by the end of the year. So, and we have, the time, this stuff is pretty quick. The time constraints are gonna be, or the time elements are gonna be, all the notices that have to go out, the public hearing, you know, all of that kinda stuff. So you mentioned that you were, there were some things that you were concerned about in the master plan that you didn't like.
No, I wanted to understand in the master plan more about it, because there are some things I feel like are sort of cut and paste from larger communities, especially when I talked about transportation issues and stuff. I felt like some of that was something, you know, I worked in a regional council coming out, I now understand how they have a template, and sometimes they cut and paste and reapply to the law. Right? I've been there. So some of it felt like it was just sort of a cut and paste that really didn't apply to this organization. We have no funding for transportation, you know, public transportation issues, so there's some of that.
That's kinda future, and that is stuff that people have brought up in the past as, you know, like Downstate, we had, we called it Dial-A-Ride.
Yeah.
They came in, they paid up, you know, kids or elderly people took them to school or took them to the...
We do have that on a county level, don't we?
They do somewhat, and they cover the township. And they cover the township.
So maybe it's hard to do a publication or communication to folks that there is something that exists. It may not be as broad as we might ideally want it today. But there is an option.
This is what we have today, and, you know, in the future, you know, here's what...
Maybe it's a station here that they keep, you know, so they're closer, or something like that, so.
Well, the bus runs come through.
So we did talk about, I mean, most of that stuff, we went through every single question.
I'm sure you guys did.
Yeah, and talked about, how does this apply, and it's, you know, pulling from our backgrounds, right? Whether we lived in, because I was in a small farming community, so, you know, we had to, that Dial-A-Ride came from the neighboring city, and, you know...
From a larger space.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, one of the things I think we looked at it is how Tuscor Township, their master plan, fits in with the surrounding communities too. Because it's not just what we provide, but what we can get from the county and from the chamber or the libraries, the schools.
And how do we publicize that, so people know that option is available.
Right, so it's looking at the overall, you know, living conditions here.
And NEMCOG, they're, you know, they're pretty good. I mean, most of the communities up here, even the county, they really think highly of NEMCOG. They, it's northeastern Michigan council government, so it's, they're used to dealing with these small communities.
Yeah.
I mean, it's more focused than the rural. It's not necessarily cut and paste from Downstate.
Certainly, if you go through the chapters we've already reviewed before you were on the board, and you've got questions or comments that you would like to see added or taken out, you know...
And I will probably, I'll go back to it now, with some more knowledge from these discussions as well.
Share those with us, because, you know, nothing is final in these.